Okay, I'm going to bring to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for June 25th, We'll start with a roll call for attendance, please.
Okay. Commissioner Anduj.
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
And Chair Fritz.
Here.
And we have Commissioner Burns and Vice Chair Henley absent this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to speak on something that is not an agendized item, now is your opportunity. If anyone in the room would like to say anything, you can come up to the podium. And if not, we will go to the Zoom. I see one person with a hand raised on Zoom. Lynda, can you unmute yourself, please? Go ahead and make your public comment.
Thank you. Anyway, you know, it's just amazing how dysfunctional and disconnected this city is and the various committees and this and that. So I'm going to deliver the same speech that I just gave to the three three and design review board. Anyway, so I'd like to, I'd like to give you a bit of historical overview, a bit of a historical overview to let you know how this town got to where it is. Barreling toward bankruptcy and infrastructure failure, traffic gridlock and being one big cancer cluster, or in the words of one of my activist colleagues, a slaughter zone, her version of the 15-minute city, and which is also an acknowledgement, the ever-increasing microwave radiation that we're all being subjected to from cell phones, cell towers, and all wireless and smart devices. This city's financial failure started, in my opinion, on December 2021, when the free person, city council majority of Diana Rich, Nisa Hinton, Patrick Slater approved a $5.6 million loan obligating Sebastopol to a 15-year payments to CICECO, which included $1.25 million to Shyster Co. right off the top, $2.2 million for Chinese-made, plastic, non-recyclable, non-durable, radiation-emitting, transmitting cancer-causing wireless water meters against the public's wishes. They were misled into this financially fatal decision by Dante Del Prete, Public Works Superintendent, who's kept repeating no cost, no cost, fighting a lot of public opposition. Ever since, Mayor Diana Rich has acted in just about every way she can to silence and not respond to the public outcry and to act against the interests of this town. And that certainly includes the ludicrous construction of about 10 housing projects. But we lack the infrastructure. While at the same time, she's meaning our police and fire departments and decimating them. Thank you. We cannot support.
Thank you for your public comment. Seeing no one else with a hand raised on Zoom and no one in the room wanting to make a public comment, we will move on to any conflicts of interest with tonight's items. Any commissioners have a conflict of interest? Good, because there's only three of us. So we have two sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with September 12th, 2023. Any comments or changes? Any motions, then?
I move that we approve the minutes of...
September 12th.
September 12th.
2023. Oh, second. All right, thank you. We have a vote on that, please.
Commissioner Anduj.
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair Fritz.
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes three with two absences of Commissioner Burns and Vice Chair Henley.
Then the next item we have is June 11th, 2024. Any comments or...
Motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes of July 11th, June 11th, 2024.
Do you want to second that? Because ever just...
I second.
Okay. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Commissioner Anduj.
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
And Chair Fritz.
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes three ayes with two absences of Commissioner Burns and Vice Chair Henley.
All right, thank you. The next item we will move on to is a first public hearing. Item 6A is the capital improvement program, compliance with general plan. We get staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Fritz and commissioners. This first item is consideration of the capital improvement plan and program for the city of Sebastopol. And as I think you may be aware from past work on this, that annually each year, state law requires that the Planning Commission review the capital improvement plan and program to determine whether it's consistent and to make a finding of consistency with the city's general plan. The city's general plan is a document that's also mandated by the state of California that really is kind of the overall blueprint for future growth within the community. And there are a number of different elements in the general plan. And those elements include the housing element, the transportation element, open space element, a number of different elements that guide future growth of a community. The idea of a capital improvement program is to look out, say, five years, and to look at what kind of infrastructure, streets, utilities, stormwater, water, et cetera, would be needed to support that future growth. And then, in terms of looking at that needed infrastructure, capital improvements, where is the money going to come from? How are you going to phase it? Et cetera. The staff typically puts together an overall five-year plan, and then each year, as we look forward to the coming fiscal year, in this case, 2425 is our focus, we have a capital improvement plan. And this evening, we have Tony Bertolero with us, who was instrumental in working with the city and staff to put together this plan. And Tony is the consulting engineering supervisor. As far as this plan is concerned, you have as an attachment to your staff report, a copy of the CIP, the five-year plan. And the way this breaks down, the projects, the capital improvement projects are broken down into a variety of categories. And for example, the categories, I'll just run right through them. In this case, there are nine basic categories: bikes, pedestrian safety, transportation plan, ADA projects, accessible projects, housing projects, park projects, paving projects, sewer water projects, stormwater projects, water projects, art projects. So you get the idea. These are capital improvements, really kind of forwarding the overall vision in the general plan. In the CIP, the idea is to describe these projects. So you'll find in the CIP that there's a description of all the projects. There's also cost and also phasing in terms of when they may occur. So that information is provided. What our team, what our staff has done, Tony being the lead on this, is to look at these projects, kind of looking forward five years, and then the immediate next year, 2024, 2025, what's coming up. And then in terms of consistency with the general plan, the general plan has a list of what are the goals, the plans, the programs for future growth of the community in the various elements. So for housing, for transportation, for land use, open space, et cetera. And so the idea is to make sure that these proposed projects reflect and are consistent with the plans and policies and goals of the general plan. So you'll see in the CIP that our team has put together, Tony taking the lead, that there's a listing of the projects per category. There's a cost breakdown. And then, for each and every one of these projects, there's an indication of how the particular project forwards a general plan policy, plan, or program. So you'll see that in here. So we have prepared a resolution for your consideration this evening, which is attached to the CIP document. And based on putting together this document and looking at the general plan and the required findings, our recommendation to the Planning Commission this evening is to go forward and make the finding, make the determination that the CIP, the capital improvement plan for 2024, 2025, is consistent, based on the report we provided to you, with the city's general plan. And that finding by the Planning Commission is required by state law before the city council can take action on the CIP. The CIP is due to go forward to the city council at their next meeting on July 2nd. So this evening, again, we're recommending that you move forward and approve the resolution, finding the CIP consistent with the general plan. And Tony Bertolero is here to answer any particular questions you may have regarding particular projects listed in the document. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? I still have a question. If you could sort of discuss, like, so how does this, I understand it's going to the council next, so will they potentially move things around or, like, reprioritize things? Or do they, how does that typically work in terms of deciding, you know, yes, this is definitely going to happen, 2425, in terms of relating it to the budget? Or how, what's the kind of linkage there?
The linkage is really, as you described, Chair, that the city council is going to decide whether or not to approve the projects and the budget that's associated with the projects and the timing of those projects. So your role is to focus on general plan consistency, but they'll be looking more carefully and closely based on your finding that they're consistent, as to, in terms of budget, what can the community afford, in what sequence, what are the priorities? And they'll make that determination. Tony may want to add to that explanation. Tony, would you like to add to that overview?
No, that was perfect, David. Good evening, Tony Bertolero with GHD. And I did want to mention to you that, you know, what we're looking at is the 2425 capital improvement plan, just the first year of this five-year program. And now that I'm looking at this document, it's not, it's hard to actually determine which projects are 2425. You have to physically look at every single project, and there's like 50 of them listed here. And there's probably only about 18 of them that are part of the 2425 plan. So what I, if you have difficulty trying to figure out which ones are the 2425 projects, I did send just now an email to John Jay. I don't know, John, if you have access to your emails, but there's a memo in there with a listing of just the 2425 projects, in case you're interested in being able to retrieve what those projects are readily. So, John, were you able to get that email?
Yes, I have that, Tony.
Yeah, and if, you know, feel free to put it up on the screen if anybody has any interest in that. But we do have, we do have that listing available so that it's a lot easier to navigate the CIP report, which just, really just goes through the entire five years. But in answer to the question with respect to what council will do on July 2nd, what they'll typically do is they'll look at all the projects that are proposed for 2425 and either approve or not approve them, or reduce the budgets for the projects. In other words, reduce the scope, because they'll feel like, you know, we don't have enough funding sources to be able to support the project. That's typically what happens. They may, they have on occasion asked to include a particular project that is not on the list, and if they do, they'll have to approve it pending a general plan consistency finding. So we've done that before, where they'll add a project or maybe two projects that are not on that list, and then we'll have to come back to the commission and retroactively approve a general plan consistency finding by the planning commissioners.
Right. Thank you, Tony. So I guess at this point, are you just looking for comments from us or questions from us? Or do you, is there, are you going to go through any specific items, Tony, or just kind of wait for us to bring things up? Or how do you want to proceed?
If I could, really, we're looking for you to ask questions at this point. And Tony is really here, if you have any questions about particular projects, and we did, you know, prepare a resolution for your action, obviously, you'll need to reach out to the public and receive public comment as well. But the idea is that in terms of the capital improvement plan for 2425, if you have questions about that, Tony's here, and she provided, you know, an email to John. Is that, are you able to screen share that, John? So that would be kind of the sequence. Any questions, reaching out to the public, and then, you know, discussion and action.
Sure. Are there any specific items that commissioners have questions about?
No. No, but I'd just say I feel like we reviewed a lot of these, or I've had them presented to us before, so I didn't find anything that I thought was out of line or particularly new.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So this is just a kind of a general understanding. There's one for undergrounding overhead utilities. I don't know if you want me to give you the page number, or how do you want me to refer to this?
If you have a page number, that would be great, and...
It's page seven of the report, page 14 of the PDF, the staff report PDF. It's page seven of the CIP. And my question is just in general about this undergrounding utilities on Petaluma Avenue. It talks about, you know, the cost and the Rule 20 credits were transferred to the county. Does that mean, like, this is kind of dead forever? Or is that something that could potentially come back? Or is this, I'm just kind of questioning, like, will that ever happen? Or is it not? Yeah, just how does the Rule 20 work?
Thank you. Tony, could you respond to that, please?
Yes, that's a good question. Council actually had to make that decision to cancel the project because the amount of local funds that would have had to been expended to do literally just a few blocks of Petaluma Avenue would have been so exorbitant for the city that they decided not to move forward with that project. And so because the city did not have sufficient funding to do what I would call, or like, their share of the project, the funds actually were returned back to PG&E because if the city, it was, and it was a PUC decision that said that, as of last December, if you did not have a project, then you give up the funds anyway. And so the best that we could do was we asked that the funds be transferred over to another Sonoma County agency so that at least the funds stayed within Sonoma County. And so that's what happened, and actually went to the county for their undergrounding projects.
Sure. Thanks. And then I had a question about page 16 of the PDF. This is enhanced crossing, pedestrian crossings, and this is just in light of, because Burnett Street is included in this, Burnett Crossing Main Street. And in light of the fact that we're doing the Caltrans grant, I'm just wondering if, like, I would hate to see, like, pedestrian improvements made, that then we do this grant, and it kind of, something, reconfiguration happens with Main Street, that then we'd be, like, undoing something that was already done. You know, does that make sense? And I just wanted to throw that as a comment, maybe to bring that up at the council meeting, that I'm just wondering if, yeah, again, I would hate to see some kind of work done that wasn't in conformance with whatever the future plan for Main Street is, based on the grant outcome. You don't have to respond to that. I just wanted to throw that out there as a, yeah, possibly something to bring up at the council meeting.
Okay.
There's an item for a new signal at Regal Road and Bodega Avenue. Again, this is a future project, but I'm just wondering if a roundabout had been considered or possible at that intersection? Or is this just sort of, since it's a future project, it's some kind of traffic control? We don't know what it is, and it just, in here is a signal at this point?
With respect to that project, it is a, proposed to be a signal because the warrant, that intersection actually has the warrants for a traffic signal. And so a roundabout was not considered for that, for that intersection. I believe there is a roundabout that is considered, and council actually shows support for a roundabout on covert, on covert lane and 116, I believe it was covert. And so, but this was not one of the intersections that were identified for a potential roundabout.
Okay. Is it possible to consider that? I'm just wondering, like, what is the, you know, a traffic signal versus a roundabout? Is there some traffic rules that make that? You know, how many cars are going through a day versus it just something that was preferred? You know, because I know...
You know, it's, I think that that signal was identified in a previous traffic study, and so that's why we went with that round, with the traffic signal being proposed, and there's some funding available for that. And so that's the reason why the signal is being proposed. We're trying to obtain a grant for that. And, but in terms of if you would like to see a roundabout, I'm not exactly sure what the process is, other than there is a traffic safety committee group that meets on a monthly basis. And I believe planning could attend that and bring up that question. And the traffic, the city's traffic engineering consultant, W Trans, actually attends those meetings on request. And so if you ask that that be added to the agenda, that could be discussed.
Okay.
That's probably a good first step.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. There's an item about purchase of market rate units to be used by, you know, for land trust properties. And there is, that is a project for this year, and it has the cost of $400,000 in property purchases and $10,500 in project management. I'm just wondering, is that an identified property purchase? Because I can't imagine the city finding a property for $400,000 to purchase in town. I'm just curious, is that a real, is that realistic? Is there something in process that we, there's an agreement to buy something for $400,000? Or...
This is a project that was put on by the prior planning director, Carrie. And if you could, if you look at that page, it also shows that it is currently unfunded.
Yeah.
So right now, she wanted to put it in there, kind of as a placeholder, to let everybody know that this is something that a planning will be working on with, with the Sonoma County Housing Land Trust to be able to do this. So I don't know, I think it's a joint project, so I don't think it would be, the property would be 450,000. It would, that would be the, I think, the city's share.
I understand. Okay. Got it.
And so, yeah, and so it's put on there, like I said, because that activity with the, with the county has not started, but she wanted to put it in there as a placeholder. But it is currently unfunded.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And... Sorry, I'm just kind of flipping through here, seeing if I wrote any other notes down. No, I think that was all of my questions. Thank you. So at this point, if there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this proposed CIP report, now is your opportunity. You'll take any comments from members of the public in the room. Any of you who would like to speak? If not, you'll go to Zoom when I see a hand raised. Please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Hey. So, you know, some of you know that I am, I am what's called a less sensitive, and I live in a shielded space, and I have to wear shielding all the time, protect myself from wireless radiation. And also, I am, I am therefore computer-free, cellphone-free, TV-free, and largely electricity-free. And so the point is that I, I lack access to what you're doing here. But I generally am, you know, paying a lot of attention to what's going on in the city. And so, anyway, I'm wondering if Tony or any of the rest of you are aware that the local current city leadership, meaning the mayor, and some of the rest of them are on board to go into this EFID, infrastructure, deal that's kind of been pitched by Linda Hopkins, who's a wonderful person, but otherwise, this is a terrible decision, idea. And what the idea is, she has talked Diana Rich and some of the others into obligating the city, meaning Sebastopol, for like a 35, 40-year obligation to give up full 25% of our property taxes into a fund over which we have no control. No control. So anyway, I'm wondering if you're taking this into consideration, along with all of the other deficits, the multi-million dollar deficits that were experiences, and also the wireless radiation that we're exposed to. And we have a ordinance against it, the smart meters, ordinance 1057. That's part of the general plan and...
Two minutes are up.
...recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Any other members of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. And just to respond to Lynda's comment, we're here tonight to just approve this proposed CIP for compliance with the general plan, plans, policies, and goals. We are not here to make any decisions about the finances of the city, or how much these are costing, or who's paying for any of these. That's just not our role in this process. That's something the city council will determine. So I bring it back to the commission for any further discussion, comments, questions, motions.
Make a motion to certify or approve that this meets the general plan consistency for these projects.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Then let's have a vote on the motion to approve this report for general plan compliance.
Aye.
Commissioner Anduj.
Yes.
Chair Fritz.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next public hearing, which is a use permit for 6794 Depot Street, currently Bohemian Stone Works. It's a conditional use permit submitted by Luma Optics. Can we have a staff report on this, please?
Could we maybe pause for, like, five minutes, please?
Sure, yeah.
A five-minute pause.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here, we'll take a break.
Yeah.
We'll resume the meeting. Those were quick five minutes.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, go ahead, John.
Okay. So this is a conditional use permit.
Okay, so this is a conditional use permit at the 6794 Depot Street. The applicant has requested for the continued use of a non-conforming use within the downtown core. The site was previously, or still is, Bohemian Stone Works. And Luma Optics is requesting the continuous continuance of the light industrial use. As noted above, Jennifer Hawkins, the owner of Luma Optics, is requesting the continued light industrial use with the intention of utilizing the space for warehousing, electronic equipment. The business will also include shipping and receiving of products. The primary business primary business this operation serves is data center applications by providing essential networking equipment to support communication infrastructure. The hours of operation requested are 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. As part of this, the written statement, the warehouse space includes the location to store CAT6 Ethernet cables and other accessories that Luma Optics produces. All activities will be held indoors and there will be no storage outside. Shipping and receiving of products will be handled within the space and involves packaging materials and tables. The zoning ordinance does allow for a non-conforming use to continue as long as it is either of the same intensity or less. And staff has determined that through the recommendations of the findings and conditions of approval, that this use meets that requirement. And with that, staff is recommending approval with the conditions attached to the staff report. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and am happy to answer any questions and then turn it over to the applicant if commission has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, staff?
Yeah, I have a question. So this sounds like it's pretty specific as to, I mean, you name the items that are going to be stored. Is it limited to those items or is it those types of items? Or is it anything that can be stored in that warehouse? How's that kind of determined?
I believe that would be, you know, up to the applicant. What they have requested is the products that they produce and ship for their business. If your, is the question inconsistency of this is kind of a similar use or more intensive use?
Yeah, I mean, that and at what point would it go beyond that or, you know?
Sure, yeah, so Bohemian Stone Works did a lot of manufacturing of granite and other stone countertops and other things like that. Staff's kind of perspective on that, if the use that Luma Optics was proposing was more intense than what Bohemian Stone Works currently does there, then that would not fit the non-conforming use. From what they've provided and from what our discussions have been, it is far less significant and intense than what is currently operating there. So staff is finding the consistency of, you know, this being a less less intensive or similar use.
And that's taken into consideration, the shipping and receiving?
Correct, yes. I believe and I defer to the applicant on this, but I would assume that the shipping and receiving for Luma Optics would be less overall than, you know, a granite countertop or stone countertop or sink or something like that, as opposed to, you know, small boxes and such.
All right, thank you.
I've kind of a follow-up question to that. So if, you know, we grant this tonight and Luma Optics is operating, would that then kind of lower the threshold for use intensity on that property? So if someone like Bohemian Stone Works came back and said, we want to do more manufacturing in that space, at that point, it wouldn't be allowed because the intensity of the use has already been kind of reduced and they've sort of set the precedent and kind of lowered the bar at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that that is kind of one of the downsides of a significantly less intensity going in there. I mean, it is allowed and we would ideally prefer less, you know, intense items for a non-conforming use. But yes, in the future, you know, the the intensity threshold would be lower.
Lower.
Yes, with this, with this proposal.
All right, Kathy?
So, so following along with that, if someone came back and wanted to make concrete countertops, slabs or shower floors, they could ask for a use permit and we could make an exception or not? I'm just curious.
So that use is not, so the peculiar thing is this parcel is located within the downtown core district, which doesn't typically allow light industrial uses. It's more geared towards our industrial zones, which is essentially the next door property. So if, you know, Bohemian Stone Works or any type of use came back, we would defer them to a industrial zoned parcel as opposed to a downtown zoned parcel because that use is not an allowed use unless it's been existing before kind of like an ordinance change where that use was no longer allowed.
And that, and that's a firm situation, we couldn't change it.
Correct.
It's just a shame that we had hoped that the Barlow would be more light industrial and yet we're losing it all there. And here at an adjacent property, we're drawing the line on the wrong side of it. Probably. But, you know, that's something we could look at in the future is redrawing a line just for a property.
Yes, it's definitely, you know, as the commission has discussed about the zoning kind of code updates and fixits, that's, that's an option that we could look at, you know, in those zones, you know, being rather than not allowed, we can look at them as a, on a case-by-case scenario and make sure that, you know, it's consistent with that. You know, I would probably look at certain sections of the downtown core where those would be kind of more allowed, which this building is kind of located right now as opposed to, you know, on the center of Main Street or something like that.
Right, it was right where the foundry was behind, on the other side of the block.
Correct.
And we've lost those two industrial businesses. And that was a hope that we would keep them.
Yeah.
Oh, well. Keeping the buildings full is also an important issue, of course.
Yes, and you know, the other part of it too is the change in this kind of brings the building up to current code standards and stuff like that because that building is fairly old and, you know, needs some TLC.
I do have another question, and this is regarding the language of the findings. So finding two, bullet point three, this just refers to consistency with the general plan. It talks about policy EV 1-16, support the development and implementation of technological infrastructure to attract and retain businesses. And I kind of read that as, and then just correct me if I'm wrong, when I read that as like doing some kind of infrastructure technological, like installing, you know, Wi-Fi downtown or installing 5G or installing new water lines or whatever, like new kind of public infrastructure? And not necessarily for like just a business that does that, I guess? Is that, am I correct in the interpretation?
Yeah, I can see it kind of, I guess, both ways in a way because they are providing, you know, technological infrastructure in town and they do have an office, you know, just off of Moore Street. So that, you know, we are retaining them and they're not leaving. But yeah, I can see-
It seems like that's more of like, I mean, I totally agree on, you know, you know, supporting local businesses and like that kind of stuff and retrofitting and rehabilitating existing commercial building. Like that all makes sense, but just this one is sort of questioning, like, is that appropriate to put here?
Okay.
And I'm open to saying, I just want to put that out there and to see if any other commissioners have a feeling about that or not or?
And we're fine, you know, if if the commission wants to strike that consistency.
Yeah, it just seems like we have other things that say it's consistent and I don't have a problem with that. But just this one seemed like it was maybe a stretch because it, I read that as being more like we want to be able to support new infrastructure installation in town, not the manufacture of infrastructure that may be going other places. If there's no other questions of staff, then does the applicant like to make any comments or? You're, you don't have to, if you don't want to?
I have a comment.
Okay, can you stand up so it's recorded? We can hear you.
Gratitude and excitement because we purchased this building and our business, you know, has been in existence for over 20 years. So we're very excited to continue to expand and grow. And we moved from the South Bay up here 17 years ago. So, yeah, I just hope this works out. And we're definitely excited to just move in and make some improvements and continue to enjoy the city.
All right, thanks. If you want to say, do anyone have any comments or questions of applicant? Good, thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Go ahead, Linda, you may unmute yourself.
Well, you know, I, again, I am, I am computer-free, cellphone-free, TV-free, etc. And so I don't have the this is about other than the agenda. So I am appreciate if somebody could elaborate a little bit about what this business is. I guess it's it's more than a warehouse. And I would be very pleased to to hear that it's like about fiber optics because that is one, one means of communication that I I support because it is, there's not off harmful energy, like magnetic fields that the power lines and all the other electrical devices do. So, and I'd also like to offer up a, or space, that five empty vacancies, we've got five vacant commercial things that you could probably get a variance on up here at the Redwood Marketplace thanks to the RV villagers. Nobody, nobody wants to be around them. For two years, we've had, had five commercial and it just it looks like it's going to continue that way with the new Gravinstein Commons with the same, same people will be occupying just a building. But also I am interested in what kind of revenue this poor financially trash-strapped city has, what kind of revenue x-wise can we look? Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other thoughts, questions, comments from the commission? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for approval of continuing of this permit.
A second.
Okay, so we have a recommended or a motion to approve the use permit and with the findings and conditions of approval in a second. So if there's no further comments or discussion, we can have a vote, please.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair Fritz?
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes with three ayes and two absences of Commissioner Burns and Vice Chair Hanley. There is a seven-day appeal period, so after 5:00 p.m. next Tuesday, if there's no appeals, then the permit is approved. And if we do receive anything, we will reach out to you and let you know. Thank you.
And good luck with everything.
Thank you for bringing that. Okay, we are about to the end of our agenda. I don't think we have any subcommittee updates that I'm aware of of planning director's report.
You know, maybe just a brief report tonight. As, as you heard earlier, the CIP is going to go to the city council on July 2nd, so that moves forward. John could probably provide a bit of an update regarding the Barlow Hotel project that has come in. I think we've reported that to you before. John and team have put out an overall completeness letter to the applicant indicating what we're looking for in terms of completing the application for processing. So that, that's the status of that. That's 83 rooms, an 83-room hotel project in the Barlow District. So that's exciting for the community. We continue to have, as you've heard and maybe have seen, our budget committee discussions and those move forward. It's really an intense time right now in terms of trying to, you know, bridge the gap, so to speak, and figure out how to bring forward a balanced budget. And that's a challenge for the budget committee and staff working with the budget committee. And we are looking at this idea of merging the planning commission with the design review board, tree board. So that still is, you know, being considered along with looking at perhaps fewer meetings of the Public Arts Committee and the Climate Action Committee. But just kind of in discussion right now, looking at would this merger, would fewer meetings, while still reaching out to the public in terms of having these committees, boards and commissions, and doing the work, their missions, but freeing up some staff time to do some things like, you know, addressing zoning code amendments that have been deferred, for example, or focusing on grant projects. With the grants, it's one thing to get a grant, it's another thing to administer the grant. And there's quite a bit of work in administering the grants and managing the consultants. And so in terms of staff time, how can we, given what's on our plates in the planning department, better balance our workload in terms of, you know, working with committees, commissions and boards, addressing grants, reviewing development projects, and then trying to keep our codes current? So there are a lot of moving parts and how, how can we balance that workload given the three members of our staff? So that's something we're looking at. So, you know, budget, a couple of hotel applications. The development agreement for the Hotel Sebastopol goes forward on July 2nd as well to city council. So we're busy, a lot going on. And John, do you want to talk about anything else?
Yeah, I'll just update the commission. I believe last meeting, we spoke about the stakeholder kind of kickoff meeting for the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Grant. We have reached out to the consultant as well as some of the members that were forwarded over to us. We have kind of two kickoff meetings coming up in July, the first one being July 1st and the second one being July 16th. Both of those will be held in person at the police department's conference room because, as David mentioned, city hall is pretty, pretty booked up with budgetary talks. So the conference room there is unavailable for the foreseeable future. As far as development projects go, the Woodmark Project Phase One. In talking to the building official, they're looking at having those buildings ready to go within the next few months or so. They're just waiting to get electrification and some water services to those buildings before they can start getting people moved in there. Within the next few weeks or so, they're going to be looking at the start of the landscaping and kind of finalizing the roadways and stuff like that there. The Kathy Austin Project, that 7621 Heelsburg, the commission saw about a year and a half ago. That was for the kind of split level or split lot, which is coming back to the commission as 100% residential. It was originally kind of half commercial, half residential. They took the commission and design review boards considerations at their preliminary review and have gone completely residential. They're in the process of a traffic study. They're in the process of a traffic study because, as we know, the intersection that Heelsburg and Murphy is quite congested there, so planning staff did request and require a traffic study to determine the SEQA analysis for that project, if it would fit an exemption or if it would require further analysis. As David mentioned, the Barlow Hotel at the Giacchi site, we did issue their incompleteness letter, or awaiting the response back to that. So, hopefully, that will come back soon, and we'll go through the process of that. I think that's it.
Any questions, staff? I have a question. So, the hotel, is that a use permit, or what is the, what is the planning entitlement process that they are going through?
Yeah. There's about 10 use permits, I think, for that project. The fourth, so, the overall site requires a number of use permits for the uses that are being proposed there. They're also going to a four-story, which requires a use permit, and their parking for the hotel project is still proposed at the Batch Plant Site, which the commission saw about, I think, two years ago now, they did, because it's in our environmental scenic open space. They were requesting that setback buffer from 100 feet, which is in our code, and the commission can approve down to a 50-foot. So, that will be coming back as part of the use permit process for both the ESOS determination and then as well as a surface parking lot does require a use permit in town. So, there's also a development agreement as part of that project, which, you know, would, it lines out, you know, what the expectation of the project will be kind of in the future and what the city will receive as part of that.
Thank you. Also, just wondering what we have in terms of maybe the next couple of meetings, and if there's a, you know, bring up again a meeting schedule where we could do our walkabout tour, if we don't have a full agenda for other kind of applications?
Yeah. I think at this point, I'd have to look through what active permits we have. I think the next meeting or so is probably fairly light, and we could look at potentially doing a walking tour. It's kind of that time of year where it makes sense to do something like that and kind of schedule a little bit earlier, maybe in the afternoon. So, if you have, if any of the commissioners have suggested sites, I know we kind of discussed it at the last meeting, that would be helpful, and then, you know, we can get out an agenda to go over that.
I think, as we discussed at a past meeting, the idea was really to meet with you, Chair Fritz, I think, and really talk about an agenda, an itinerary. And so, why don't we schedule that meeting? I think there was consensus among commissioners, as I recall, for us to do that. So, we'll check on upcoming agendas, assuming that they're lighter. Why don't we reach out to you and try to set up a meeting to discuss, you know, an itinerary, sites, areas of focus, et cetera, if that's okay with you?
That'd be great. Yeah. If there's nothing else, then I will adjourn us until our next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.